We did post a meeting, a special meeting, for a closed session, but we're not ready with that, so we're not going to hold that meeting. And we will move on to the Urbana City Council meeting, which I'd like to call to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson. Mr. Madigan.
Present.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here. First item is the approval of minutes. We have April 4th and April 18th, 2016. I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any additions or corrections? If not, all -- oh, you want to say something, Bill? Go ahead.
I'd just point out that we were going -- we thought about correcting the April 4th minutes last time, but apparently it's not common practice to include motions and amendments that didn't pass. So, we aren't going to include that. And the same thing happened with, two weeks ago, on April 18th, there was a motion and amendment that didn't pass, so it's not in the minutes.
Yeah.
Not tonight.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any petitions and communications. First, we have, I have presentations, but I would like to have Andrew Fell come up first.
I just want to make a brief point, in case anyone's here, for the case, for the variances, that you have a letter and we're going to request a continuance of that case, so that we can attempt to come to a resolution to build by rights on the property. So, we're going to request to continue that, so if anybody is here, I just don't want to have them wait through the whole council meeting, because it's the last item on the agenda.
Okay.
But I'll be here to answer any questions when it comes up.
Did you want to say something, Trent? You could go ahead and ask him a question.
Yeah, if we're dropping this from the, if we're, we could just drop this from the agenda and take it up, or are we planning on going ahead and talking about it anyway? We don't need to. The one question I have, Mr. Fell, is, and I'm glad you're doing this, I've put a lot of time in with staff, talking to them about this, along with another council member. And I understand the floor area ratio issues, and was your plan to build one story, or, you know, is there a reason why you can't get the same floor area ratio by building a two-story building here?
Well, there are several overlapping issues. One of them is the floor area ratio. Our intent all along was to build a three-story building, but the decreased footprint doesn't allow us to build as many, either units or bedrooms, as we initially planned. So, the initial intent on the lot was to build two two-bedroom apartments on each floor level, so we'd have a total of six two-bedroom apartments, to have 12 bedrooms. Under the, the, if the variances would go through, that is reduced to a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom per floor, so we have a total of nine bedrooms. And it, with the work we've done so far, it looks like with no variances, we were probably going to be able to build one three-bedroom apartment on each floor. So, each iteration of this provides less income to the owner, so we need to, our intent is to sort of flush out this three-bedroom unit, and then let the owner run his pro forma, and if it comes out as an acceptable level to him, we will withdraw the requests.
Okay, maybe I just don't understand floor area ratio, then. You know, it's point, you know, it's .7 FAR for the MOR district. So, 70% of the property could be built on as a one-story. It's my understanding there'd be .35 for a two-story, and then about .24, or 24% for a three-story.
Kind of, that's sort of a simplistic methodology, I guess. So, the floor area ratio counts as the square footage built over all floors, and the limitation we have is the footprint we're allowed to build on, so that, and the sewer is decreasing our buildable footprint. So, we can't get on one floor, we can't, originally, we could get two two-bedroom apartments on one floor. We don't have enough room to do that with the sewer restriction. So, with the variances we requested, we have enough area on each floor to get a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. So, the, what we're going to try to do is design the building, so there's a three-bedroom apartment on each floor. So, for instance, we're eliminating one kitchen and one living room per floor, to build a three-bedroom apartment. So, it's sort of what the footprint of the building allows us to build on a floor.
Okay, so the footprint is .24, and that can't, roughly, for a three, for a three-story, and that can't be moved on this property, so that it fits even with the sewer there? That's what I'm having trouble seeing. I guess, you know, when I draw it, I can't quite see that.
Yeah, well, it's kind of difficult to explain verbally, I guess, but with the sewer restriction, our buildable footprint was only about 24 feet wide. And part of the MOR restrictions are, the design intent is, we have a front door and a front yard, and the front of the building faces the street, so on that 24-foot frontage, we have to get an apartment, a front door, and a stairway. So, our buildable area on the street side is now maybe 15 feet wide. So, there's just a limitation of how, of the geometry we have to work with. So, the geometry of the sewer is giving us a very long and narrow building footprint, instead of a square building footprint.
Okay. Well, one of the things that, I think I still want to keep this on the agenda, so that we can talk about the sewer itself. Since that's been in the newspaper, I think we need to start that discussion tonight. So, I would ask that we come back to that specific question, because I have issues related to building near the sewer, and I put a lot of time into this, and I'd just as soon read my statement and go from there. So, and then look forward to working with you on figuring out how best to utilize this property.
Do you think you'll be back in two weeks, or will it take longer?
No, I think we'll be back in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations, Community Elements Reentry Program.
My name's Bruce Barnard, and I'm here in my capacity as a consultant, working with Community Elements on reentry, and the intersection between criminal justice system and mental health issues. I've been working in this area, and addictions, mental health, and reentry, for more decades than I care to admit. But, what I want to update you on, and I thank you for taking the time to learn a little bit more about what we've been doing in the area of reentry at Community Elements since 2014. We responded to a request for proposals from the county to be the reentry services provider. In our proposal, we suggested the establishment of a reentry council, to research best practices and model programs for community reentry, to build collaborative relationships with other agencies that provide a variety of supporting services. One of the challenges with reentry, and I think it's important when we think about this to keep in mind, is the disconnection from support systems, from communities of caring, even from the advances of technology, when we think about how difficult and how frustrating it is for us when an operating system changes. Imagine returning to a community after 10 years of incarceration, when all of a sudden job applications are online, and employers expect you to be able to Skype in for an interview. So, it's incumbent on communities to have some kind of an organized and supportive reentry system, in order to get the best possible outcomes. In addition to that, we began providing reentry screening, and linkage and coordination to existing services, and to take a data-driven approach, to actually try to understand what the nature of reentry in Champaign-Urbana and Champaign County is, and what services people need, what their needs are, and how we might best coordinate that. In 2014, we initiated the reentry council, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We began doing screening and case management services. We have a case manager who's dedicated to this. We researched best practices in reentry services across the nation, including crisis services. One of the things that's largely hidden is the suicide rate among people who are returning from incarceration. People returning from incarceration are at very high risk of suicide within the first six months. So, crisis is important, housing, education and employment, peer support services, and again, data analysis, to be able to actually measure our outcomes and know what the effect of our programs are. The reentry council has been very active. We attempted to develop a council that was representative of the community, and to get key decision-makers in the community on the council. This is the list of the current council. There are social service agencies, key providers of behavioral health services involved, law enforcement, Chief Connolly represents law enforcement on the reentry council, representatives of the county board, healthcare consumers, the mental health board, both local or county probation, as well as US probation. TASK, Treatment Alternatives for Safe Communities, is a state social service organization that does a lot of work within the Department of Corrections, and does some reentry services. This reentry council is been, has been very active, and has taken a very active role in defining how we are going to calculate recidivism, how we are going to prioritize, we have limited resources, so how we're going to prioritize the limited resources that we have. They have, are busy people, obviously, you can see from the positions that they hold, but they come religiously every month, and have been extraordinarily supportive of our efforts to try and coordinate reentry services in the county. And I guess, I should also mention, there is citizen representation there, as well as first followers, the peer reentry program. One of the things that we suggested needed to happen, and have been working very hard at, is to solicit some additional resources for this area. We have written two federal grants for reentry and mental health housing programs. We have written grants to specifically provide housing to the reentry population. You'll see in a minute that housing is a significant issue and concern. We have, I mean, all the way down to a small local grant to the Orange Crush Foundation, but I'm really proud of that. They saw that there was a need for transportation, and they stepped up and were willing to provide transportation through the Mass Transit District, for people to get to job interviews, to get to the programming that they needed to get to. We've developed and facilitated two community-level reentry resource fairs. We had one just about a month ago. They've been very well attended. It gives the reentry population an opportunity to meet with the social service providers, the housing providers, employers. It's been a very successful event, and we plan to continue it in the future. We have now a database of employers who are willing to work with the reentry population, and a database of housing providers who are willing to rent to the reentry population. There was no easy way to do that, other than just start contacting people, making phone calls, and try to build those databases. It just, it hadn't been done in a long time, and it needed to be done. We've tried to build community awareness and develop new partnerships with social service providers. We went into this with the idea that we were not going to build a comprehensive reentry program in Champaign County. We were not going to try and provide substance abuse treatment, mental health counseling, housing. What we were going to do is to try and link to the existing resources. That's been a challenge. I mean, the service system is under a great deal of stress right now. But I have to say that most of our community partners have been more than willing to do what they can, and realize that there's a significant need for this population. We're onsite at the Champaign County Jail. Community Elements is at the jail doing screenings for mental health and linkage for mental health services, and we also have our reentry case manager at the county jail. One of the things that was one of my top priorities going into this was to get from, and this was harder to get than you might think, to get from the Department of Corrections notification of people who were returning to our community, who were coming home, so that we could reach out to them and contact them. And we have now been able to do that. We have a goal to reach 100% of the people who are completing sentences and returning to Champaign County, in order to offer them linkage and resources. So, we have, since inception, we're talking, we've been in operation now a little bit over two years, we're going into our third year. We've made contact with 501 people. The way it works is, we contact everyone, we offer everyone a flyer with information about who they can contact if they need food assistance, if they need housing assistance. So, 501 people we've contacted. We ask permission for them to participate in a screening. 347, or about 70% of those we contacted, have said, "Yes, I would like to go ahead and have a screening." The screening is for mental health, for addictions, for other needs. Of that 347, we've engaged 174 people, or about 35% of those that we contacted, in case management services. And you can see the racial breakdown there, which is pretty close to what you'll see in the DOC population. We focused heavily on the DOC population in this initiative, because there were other services that we were providing in the Champaign County Jail, and the reentry council felt like the folks coming out of Department of Corrections really did not have access to a lot of services. So, the definitions that I'm using here are, a referral is when we help someone access a service, linkage is when they actually secure that service, and we are able to document that they received the services that they needed for a specific need. We make referrals in 100% of the cases for those that we engage in services. And what we've been doing is tracking the areas. So, you'll see that 36% identified, and in this case, when we say identified need, that's self-report. If the person tells us they have a need for housing, then they're going to show up here as having a need for housing. So, 36% report a need for housing. We've had a successful outcome with 31% of those. So, 62 have an identified need, that's 36% of the population. 19 of them were actually able to obtain housing as a consequence of our referral, so that's 31%. So, you can see, we still have an unmet need for housing. Employment, 80%, that's not surprising, and we've had successful outcomes with 54%. I'm not going to go through each of these with you, just to point out to you that we're trying to determine what the areas of needs are, and where we are able to have a successful outcome with the individual, which also helps guide our program development and our seeking of new initiatives in order to address unmet needs. We've submitted two grant proposals to the Corporation for Supportive Housing, specifically for housing. We've been working with the housing authority, we've met with the housing authority this week, to attempt to clarify with them the needs that we have in the community, and some of the issues that the council has identified around family reunification. But, we primarily relied on our contacts with property owners who are willing to work with us. Employment, we have over 200 people in our database who are willing. There are some tax incentives that a lot of employers are not aware of, for employing formerly incarcerated individuals. Education, we've been working with Parkland College, with the Adult Reentry Program there, with Adult Education Center. Medical and benefits, we have a very close relationship with healthcare consumers who do benefit counseling and advocacy. They have a case manager in the jail, and work specifically with the population for reentry, whether they're DOC or county jail. Behavioral health, Community Elements is the primary provider of mental health services. We also work with Prairie Center, who provide addiction treatment programs. And we're using, IMRT stands for Moral Reconnaissance Therapy. It is an evidence-based practice for people, designed specifically for people who have So, I mentioned recidivism, it's one of the things that was very important for us to track, to find out what the outcomes were. Department of Corrections, Illinois Department of Corrections, reports about a 50% recidivism rate. In Champaign County, it took us quite a while to get to this, using our definition of recidivism, which is a new judgment within three years. Champaign County has a recidivism rate of about 32%. So far, in the two-year period, now, obviously, if our definition says recidivism within three years, we're not there yet, we're only two years into the program. But so far, we're showing a 13.4% recidivism rate. And if you add pending charges, that goes up to about 16.6%. So, roughly half of the recidivism rate in general, for Champaign County, is what we're seeing with the population that is engaged with us for case management services. That, to me, shows a lot of promise, that offering some services, reaching out to people to say, "Welcome home, is there anything we can do to help you? We want to be there to do that." We're going to continue to monitor that, and see how that, at the end of the third year, what that looks like. But, so far, it's looking very positively, and it's looking like a great return on investment for the county, in terms of, these services that we're providing are much less expensive than incarceration, both in terms of monetary and human terms. I've also put on here the satisfaction rate, and that may seem kind of like, "Oh, yeah, well, you know, they're happy with you." But, the research, especially in addictions, says that the best predictor of a positive outcome is length of engagement. It's not what type of service I provide, or what level of service I provide, it's how long I stay engaged with the person. So, when I work with programs around developing these models, I'm very focused on satisfaction, because satisfaction's what's going to keep the person coming back. And the longer they're engaged, the more we're going to predict a positive outcome. So, a 94% satisfaction with the reentry program experience, and 100% saying that they would be willing to refer a friend for similar help, to me, bodes very well for the program. As I said, housing is a significant issue, and it's something, it's one of my priorities to try and work on. If you look at the adult county probation population, they currently report 34 homeless people, and 40 at-risk of homeless. That is recidivism waiting to happen. Adult IDOC, 14 homeless, nine at-risk of homeless. US probation has a much smaller population. They report one homeless and one at-risk of homeless. So, housing is something we need to work on as a community, in partnership with the housing authority, with our housing providers, working with the reentry council, in order to try to provide that supportive housing and those housing opportunities. If you look at where folks are at, Time Center, Salvation Army, See You at Home, this will show you how many people they serve a month, what the reentry population is, and the percentage of the reentry population. So, you'll see over 20% of the folks at Time Center, 10% of the folks at Salvation Army, 25% of the folks at See You at Home. And I know that Cunningham Township has provided funding assistance to some of those organizations, and I applaud you for that, because those are essential first steps in getting people into permanent housing. As part of another initiative, we were at, and the other initiative is the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. We were in Washington DC, and housing is a key focus in terms of people who are incarcerated with mental illness, people who are incarcerated with addiction services. So, there's a major focus on housing-first models, and one of the things I would very much like to see in this community is demonstration projects that are partnerships between housing authorities and reentry programs, to recognizing that housing authorities have an interest in the safety of their facilities and their residents, but also recognizing that there is a critical need for housing for the reentry population. So, drawing on that expertise in partnerships is being encouraged at the federal level, and I think we should be taking advantage of it at the local level. Where we're going is to continue to develop initiatives to more effectively address the needs of the reentry population, based on risk and needs assessment. That's an area for improvement for us. There is a great deal of literature out there, that helps to document what characteristics indicate high risk for recidivism, both in terms of, well, characteristic and in terms of needs, and allow us to more effectively determine what level of services we want to provide. One of the things that, in that literature, you'll find, is that providing high-level services to someone who does not need them, puts them at higher risk of recidivism. So, we want to be careful how we allocate those resources, and how we direct our programs in terms of a more research-based risk and needs assessment. County probation is using that, it's not being used anywhere else in the community right now. Coordinate reentry services with work under the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program. I mentioned, the reentry initiative is not dependent on a mental health or substance use diagnosis, it's simply dependent on need. If you are returning from incarceration, you are eligible for the program. There are other things that Community Elements is involved in, and I'm also involved in as a consultant, where we are looking specifically at the intersection between mental health and criminal justice. We have federal funding for a Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program that's going on right now, through what we're calling the Crisis Response Planning Group, that's looking at police activities, and our need for crisis intervention as an alternative to incarceration. Reentry programming needs to coordinate very closely, so that we're not duplicating efforts and wasting resources with those other initiatives. And we are going to continue to evaluate participation, continue to build those community partnerships, and continue to monitor recidivism data, so that we know what the outcomes of our programs really are. And I want to be respectful And I want to be respectful of your time, I've probably already taken too much.
Are there any questions? Bill?
Yeah, you mentioned that when people are released from I Doc, they send you a list of their names or something, and then you're responsible for contacting those people?
So one of the things that we've done through the reentry council is to develop a very close relationship with parole. And so, once they are notified that someone is returning to the community, they let us know and give us the information so that we can contact them. We also are doing screenings at the parole office, so if people are coming in to see their parole officer, or in some cases, their task officer, we're also onsite in order to do those screenings.
So these people come from like a variety of places, you know, different kinds of levels of security and everything where they've been, sometimes they've maybe had work release programs where they were. Do you ever get like some kind of assessment from I Doc, as far as something that would give you a little bit of a clue before you meet them, what they might need, or who you might be able to match with some of your resources?
So there are some, for example, addictions treatment programs within DOC, and that's the reason that task is part of our reentry council, is that they are providing a lot of those services. So in that case, yes, we actually get some very good assessment information, assuming the person signs a release of information, you know, that's protected information. But yes, we do get that, and that's part of building those partnerships. If the person has been on probation, and we are able to coordinate with the probation office, they have the risk needs assessment, and so we can build on that information.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Charlie?
Thank you, thank you very much. It reminds me, and you reminded me with your, the cross-collaboration and making sure you don't duplicate services. I've been very interested in crisis response at the county level and such, and I owe Lieutenant Sanders some work on my part to move that forward, and a lot of it is based around community elements and such. So what's out there right now that sort of serves multiple pillars? And I mean, Community Elements has its hand in a lot of things, and you're also merging with, what's the status of the merger and so on and all that, you know?
I mean, I'm a consultant, not an employee, Community Elements, but it's Rosecrantz, which is a large provider in northern Illinois, and my understanding is they're in the due diligence process, but that's still ongoing.
Okay, and then, so what is out there that serves both the reentry community and would serve crisis response and other, you know, what do we already have in the county to help us?
So Community Elements has, through Champaign County Mental Health Board, resources to provide case management, assessment, and linkage to community resources at the county The, there is a crisis team, a crisis response team, mental health crisis team, that works very closely with the law enforcement-trained crisis intervention team officers who go onsite and respond to cases where they feel that there may be a mental illness involved. So there's a very close collaboration between those two. Community Elements doesn't have the resources to be able to respond to every one of those situations. So one of the things we're doing through the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program is to actually try to quantify the numbers as much as we can, so that we can look at the community need for, say, crisis intervention service. If we had a facility where we could take people, similar to the Youth Assessment Center, how many people would that need to serve? What would be the demand on that, and what types of services would be there? And that's part of the charge of the Crisis Response Planning Committee right now.
And so if we were to do something like that, how would that help the reentry?
The reentry population? In an ancillary way, but as I said, the risk of suicide, and suicidality is not necessarily indicative of a mental illness, but the risk of suicide is very high with the reentry population. So if such a facility existed, that may be a possibility. Now, Community Elements also has a crisis center, which is a respite center, it's called, that people who require a residential placement but do not have significant enough needs to require hospitalization can go to that respite center. So that's a resource that exists. So that's another example. We don't want to duplicate that resource, we want to build something that's going to meet the needs.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have.
You have another question? Okay, Aaron?
So I appreciate your presentation, Bruce, right?
Right.
Barnhart? And there were some very good points that you shared, that some of them, most of them I'm familiar with, because of the work that I've done around this issue myself, and, but there were some things that I thought were pretty interesting. Having to Skype for an interview, I thought was something that was some good information to make sure that we share with the individuals who either here or who are listening. And then you spoke about the reentry council, and I looked at some of the names that are on there. Of course, I know Marlin, and I know James, and I know Tyke. It just seems to be a lot of the same old people who are on there, though, a lot of administrators and pretty heavy from that perspective, and you're building relationships, I would imagine, with those folks who, like you said about the parolees and stuff, who will come at home. But I've always been very interested in seeing more citizen participation.
Sure.
I know, of course, Marlin and James, we worked together pretty closely at Citizens with Conviction, before Marlin moved on to start First Followers. So the people that I see on there, I don't see very many other people outside of the group who's already working on these issues. Is there any effort to bring more people and more citizen involvement in that?
Well, one of the things that I did not talk about, and I appreciate that, because it's an area that I would like to do more with. But as we were developing this, one of the things that I did was a series of focus groups, and I went to Danville Correctional Center, to the state prison there. We're also reaching out to other DOC facilities. I did a series of focus groups with formerly incarcerated individuals who were either on probation or on parole, to try and get a sense of what the needs were. But I would very much like to have an advisory committee similar to the reentry council, which a lot of that is structurally trying to get the decision-makers around the table, folks who can make things happen at probation, or at DOC, or at parole. But an advisory council, in addition to that, I think, not eliminating the citizen representation that's already there, but to add to it and to provide another avenue, is something that I would like to do very much.
He says you have a case manager. Who's the case manager?
His name's Matt Chinard, is the case manager. There's a full-time case manager, and there's a coordinator. The coordinator does a lot of the outreach, the initial outreach phone calls, she's involved in the grant-writing process. My time is actually very limited, just four hours a week, so she takes on a lot of the administrative functions of the program. Matt is based at the jail and at the parole office, and does some work out of our Walnut Facility.
So the, so Matt Chinard and the young lady is a coordinator, outreach coordinator?
Celeste Blodgett is the reentry program coordinator.
Okay.
And she's also the coordinator of the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program, so it's, she divides her time between those two programs.
And you also mentioned something about the suicide rates, which I thought was somewhat newer information for me, I didn't experience that with a lot of the people that I spoke with, recidivism, of course, but I didn't see a lot of the suicide stuff. And I am happy to see that, so I see that the First Followers are on the board.
Yes.
You work with them?
First Followers has a seat at the reentry council, and First Followers has participated in the reentry program fairs. When they were beginning to start to see people, I offered and they accepted to do some training with them on, you know, some of the basic issues of ethics and that kind of thing, so.
Did they receive funding from you guys at all?
No.
Because you mentioned them as a peer group, so I didn't, I don't know.
I think of it as a peer case management or a peer counseling approach, I mean, that's the way I look at it, in terms of where it would fall in the literature.
So when you look at the, so you're a consultant for Community Elements, you don't work for them, right?
That's correct.
I was just looking at the model, do any people with felony convictions work for Community Element?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
For me, it's always a sore spot for me, when programs like this get developed, that the individuals who are directly affected are not employed, not stipend, the resources are sort of, they're sort of guided towards resources, which I think is still great, it's appreciated. But actually being able to work with the organization, or to the funding that you're seeking being used, going directly to those individuals, is always something that I think is positive. When we were talking about this, we talked about someone who could outreach into the community, being stipend, for instance, because we know employment has a lot to do with recidivism or lack of employment. So I was just wondering if that was the case. And I'm interested in hearing more about the partnerships with HUD and reentry. We have an agreement, I believe, with HUD coming up for Aspen Court, which could possibly be, I think, demolished and rebuilt, or refurbished or something like that, maybe that's a possible conversation. But thank you, I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much. Rich Cahill?
It's too bad I couldn't go after Andrew. I'd like to talk a little bit, a few council members were at the ZBA meeting last Wednesday, and it was encouraging to see, this room was full of a lot of people very concerned about what we thought was going to be major setbacks to the front yard. And at the meeting, when it was announced that, well, they're not off the table, now they're minor. And so suddenly, the people that are all revved up for a fight, it kind of went away. And then the, when became the idea of the side yard setback, it was like, well, they didn't know the sewer was there, and who really cares if two new houses or apartments are squeezed together? So it passed six to one. I think I'm more concerned about the whole process and the city staff. It seems that when anything comes up in the MOR area along Green and Elm, they always ask for variances. And it almost was like, what was intended with MOR, when the very first, the whole purpose of it or incentive was the 500 block of Elm, when the thing came right up to the minimum setback. In a week or two, you're going to hear, I don't know, a lot of you are on the Wuna chatroom, the development on Nevada and Lincoln. On the last I looked, there's about 50 comments going back and forth. Well, to me, you know, Lincoln Avenue is a major corridor, protects West Urbana, but if somebody lives on Green and Orchard, to me, the corridor that I think is more fragile and more important is the downtown to campus, and that's what got things going back in 1990. The corridor to get the kids from campus to Lincoln Square, which is, and to me, the corridor that's, still retains the charm, is Green Street. And each year, more and more is chipped away. It was a 600 block, and I give the developers and staff credit, they blend in. And now we had the 700 block, and I'm sure with Andrew, something will blend in. But I think you can't just ignore the gold and the visions of MOR. And I encourage city staff to try to work with developers, try to encourage good reuse of this area, because to me, it's fragile, there's not left, not much left. We don't want to look like Springfield Avenue. To me, Lincoln Avenue, where do you start? You know, come to Green Street, it's all gone, you go Green up to Illinois, it's gone. Now you're going to go Green to Nevada's, or from Lincoln to, so there's not much left to Lincoln. It does protect places to the east, and you're going to hear a lot about that in the coming weeks, but don't forget Green Street. It's the oldest part of town, don't forget Elm Street, it's the oldest part of town. So I hope you consider, we don't have a lot of professors living in our neighborhood, we had three, we have three residents living on Green Street, they all came and spoke last Wednesday, but don't forget about us. I've been paying taxes for 40 years in this neighborhood, and to me, it's my property values, and I don't want to see what's out my window becoming another corridor like further west on Green Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert D. Hatley?
May I hold my comments until the agenda?
Sure.
Thank you.
Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood would like to express their concern about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewers, but do not wish to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? I have three proclamations, and then I have an announcement. First, whereas Bernadine Evans Stake has just celebrated her 90th birthday, and whereas Bernadine served a total of 12 years on the Urbana City Council, and whereas Bernadine subsequently served 19 years on the Urbana Plan Commission, and whereas Bernadine has been a gracious hostess for countless political candidates at the local, state, and national levels, and whereas Bernadine has contributed many ideas and worked tirelessly on numerous worthy causes on behalf of the people of Urbana, now therefore I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Bernadine Evans Stake as an Urbana treasure, in appreciation for all she has done for the people of Urbana. I have another one here. Whereas volunteers and nonprofit organizations perform invaluable services for our community and work tirelessly to make life better for the citizens of our community, and whereas the 7th McKinley Foundation Social Justice Awards Celebration is Saturday, May 7, 2016, and whereas the Social Justice Awards Celebration recognizes individuals and organizations that are making a difference in our community and working to make our community a better place for everyone, and whereas out of more than 20 worthwhile organizations and individuals who applied, the foundation is recognizing Robert King as outstanding community individual, Jason Hui as outstanding student individual, Habitat for Humanity at Urbana High School as outstanding student organization, and Habitat for Humanity as outstanding community organization. Now therefore I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2016, as Social Justice Day in the City of Urbana, Illinois. And finally, whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an utilitarian, economical, environmentally sound, and effective means of personal transportation, recreation, and fitness, and whereas the cities of Urbana and Champaign both identified as bicycle-friendly communities by the League of American Bicyclists, encourage the use of bicycles as a means of transportation, and whereas the cities recognize bicyclists as legitimate roadway users entitled to legal and responsible use of all public roadways, and whereas the cities encourage the increased use of bicycles benefiting all citizens of Urbana and Champaign by improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion and noise, increasing the use of independence upon finite energy sources, and fostering exercise. And whereas Champaign County bikes ride Illinois, and the mayors encourage all citizens to ride their bicycles to work to the store, to the park, around their neighborhoods, and with friends and family to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved by bicycling, now therefore I, Laurel Lent Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, and Deborah Frank Finan, Mayor of the City of Champaign, Illinois, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 3, that's tomorrow, folks. do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 3, that's tomorrow, folks, as Bike to Work Day, and Wednesday, May 4, as Bike to School Day in the cities of Urbana and Champaign. Charlie, you want to say something?
Yeah, I was, I was just going to add, Jeff Yaki is here from Champaign County Bikes. I was going to ask you to give him that proclamation, if that was appropriate. And I think maybe Jeff can make a few comments about registration on that sort of, for the, for the two events.
Thank you, let me just take a couple of seconds and tell you that Bike Month is really an encouragement activity. Champaign County Bikes is involved sometimes in engineering, and sometimes in enforcement, and a lot of education. This month is all about encouragement activities for all kinds of people. Yesterday, we were in the parks pumping tires that were flat with air. We're going to be in schools, we got library programs, we got Park District programs, all kinds of stuff during this month. We at the farmer's market. Whereas last year, we took a, made a project during our month, and we raised funds for the Kickapoo Rail Trail, and over 300 individual cyclists made donations, amounted to about $11,000 that got matched. That was great. This year, this is our shirt this year, and our focus is on youth bicycle education. And so we're raising funds from local cyclists to buy a fleet of about 40 bicycles. They're high-quality, highly adjustable bikes. These are amazing, that you can lower the seats, lower the handlebars, squish them together, and they'll fit a kid four feet, six inches tall. Or you can stretch them out, and yeah, Mike, you could ride it, six feet two or so. And so we can use, I mean, some of those junior high kids are tall, they're bigger than I am. And yet you got some guys that haven't started growing yet in fourth grade, and they're, they're still small. So we're looking to buy a fleet of those bicycles, a trailer to store and haul them around in, and to really advance that. And we're excited that this year, our work in partnership with the Urbana School District is growing. And so we are at the junior high right now, we got other bike rodeos planned at elementary schools, and our partnership with the Park District is growing. And so we're going to have bicycle education as a component to the summer camps in the month of July out of Crystal Lake Park. And so we're going to have the trailer and the bikes and be involved there. So we're really appreciative to partner along with these city organizations. We think it's going to be a good month. I'm going to leave these shirts here, if you've got kids in your neighborhood, or grandkids, or different things like that, grab them a shirt, tell them to wear them on Thursday and ride their bikes. Thank you.
We'll get you the official proclamation with the gold seal. I don't have that ready yet, I just read from a draft.
Okay, super, thank you very much.
Okay, and for those who are wondering and want to find out more information, it's CUbike.org, or ChampaignCountyBikes.org will get you there as well.
Yeah, thank you.
He needs an adjustable bike also. I do have an announcement, I got a call from the Associated Press, I think it was on Friday, and they had a story that was done by some researchers about the cost of hospitals. And it turns out that they surveyed 3,000 American hospitals, and Carl Hospital is number 10 in terms of total profits. And it's number six in terms of profits per patient released. So that means they are not only in the top 1%, they're in the top 1/3 of 1% in terms of profits. Their profit was $164 million, which is about three times the budget of the, of the City of Urbana. And if they paid their property taxes to all the taxing districts in this county, based on their Urbana properties, and also the ones in Champaign, that would be a $6 million bill, so 6 million out of $164 million profit. It raises a huge issue about what not-for-profit means because of the majority of the hospitals in the top 10 were supposedly not-for-profit, and they were making more money than for-profit hospitals. Did you want to say something? Yeah, annual, every year. When we looked at it in 2011, they were making 29% profit, which is much more than most businesses make. So that's going to be an interesting story. I guess we will do Windsor Road next. A presentation on Windsor Road, right?
Really, for tonight, I have a statement, and it's just, wanted to relay to you, the city and the contractor are continuing to work together to resolve, come to resolution of the pavement issues on Windsor Road. I do not have anything more I can discuss at this time about this issue.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions from the tour that they want to ask Bill Gray?
Somewhere, here I have notes. I'm just wondering if it would be more appropriate to talk about these, you said Craig is coming back next week, or would it be more appropriate then to do all the street questions then?
Sure, or if you want to email them to us ahead of time to make sure we answer them, it would be fine.
Yeah, no, I've been talking to folks on campus and along Lincoln about the lighting. So knowing more about the lighting along Lincoln and what the plans are there, pedestrian studies. You know, when I go out there, I see it as very uneven lighting at night, especially when the trees are leafing out, so. Let's see, I'm trying to think, questions that I have here that are not. We did not go by the, by potential development sites that are south of Colorado, between Colorado and Windsor on Philo Road. There are a couple of properties on both sides that really need to be marketed and need some help. So that's something I'd like to see brought forward at some point. I can't help but comment that at the Orchard Downs intersection, since that's lighting that's owned by, and maintain, owned by the university, and they'd have to pay to replace it, they own quite a bit of property there on the south side of the road. I just can't help but wonder if that's not a location for removing a traffic signal and putting in a, a modern roundabout. And then, I know that we went by a number of places that are identified as potential gaming parlor sites. And I wonder at what point we're going to say we've got enough gaming parlor sites in the community and, and stop that proliferation. It'd be good to know if the existing current gaming parlor sites are, are holding on or, or treading water, or making a business of it. So, and then another, another two items that I thought of as we went by there is, I think at one point, there was talk of a hotel at I-74 in Lincoln, I think we approved that. Approved a lot there, and some designs, and nothing ever happened. There's one hotel there, I thought there was going to be another one next to it. And, and then of course, I've got to suggest Alexis Dealership for Napleton as, as a, as a possibility. So I'd like to see somebody go after that one.
Libby, did you want to respond to that?
That was about 10 years ago. They platted it, but they didn't build, but that was about 10 years ago, so time flies. It was a long time ago.
Ah, I've been on the council too long.
Okay, Aaron?
So one is, I've talked sort of publicly with a lot of people about this, but I'm floating it again as we rode down quite a few pretty bumpy roads, some in need of, would you say, complete overhaul or repair, just rip them up and lay them down again. When you think about something like that, just sort of off the cuff, whether it's Lincoln Avenue, North Lincoln Avenue, or Colorado, or what is that, Florida, and what turns into Kirby, how many millions of dollars are we talking about there?
I think we'd be in a position to talk about that next Monday night.
Okay, okay, so I'll save my other question for next Monday night. What do public-private partnerships, how do they, and maybe Libby, I don't know if this would be your question, but this is a relationship to like, you guys touted Gregory Place as a, as a, as a good public-private partnership. But I'm always concerned about how these partnerships play out. And so, you know, how does that affect, like, I don't know, public sector jobs? Is there a negative impact on that in any way, shape, or form?
Well, that was a good example because it brought some tax revenue, and the buildings were built to university standards. And I think the contracts were to those standards as well. So compared to the situation we often see with tax-exempt development, that's preferable, especially on the edges there. We passed by the Einstein Bagels Building, that also was public-private, although the, that was also built to university standards, but the, the land is taxed as well in that situation. So those are a couple of good examples we have.
And when it was, we talked last week or week before about the Soccer Planet that we rode by today, getting another round of funding or tax rebates or something. I'm not exactly sure what it is. And basically, the answer, the reason is because they are, they're doing well. So does Harachi's qualify, since it's doing well?
Harachi's is not in a TIF district.
If it was, it would qualify though, because it's doing well?
Potentially, but that's not the criteria, though. It does need to be eligible, it needs to be in a redevelopment area, it needs to meet the redevelopment plan. And we did target that area when we adopted the TIF 4 plan for uses like Soccer Planet. Those come in the form of development agreements. And the idea is that the projects will generate revenue that can be used to fund the improvement. So without the revenue generated by the built improvements, those incentives don't come forward, and those examples in particular.
So when we redo Aspen Court, I know in the Cunningham Township tentative budget, there was an email that Michelle sent out about the program she designed that was going to do rent assistance, that only about $1,000 of that had been used, or something like that. And I'm trying to see when we do a project like Aspen Court, thinking about what Mr. Barnhart just talked about, about reentry, can we take, can township money be directed or earmarked towards? And can it, can the township take part in agreement with the, the city and HUD to give funding or to offer funding for a program like that?
Well, I know there's restrictions on township funding. So usually, it's supplemental to the programs that we fund with our HUD dollars. And I think the Rensselaer City is one area that fits within their charter. So I think it supplements some of the housing programs that we're available, that we are able to provide working with our HUD funds and with the Housing Authority, for example, or with a, a Chodo-like Habitat for Humanity, or some of the others that we've worked with over the years.
Well, just for everybody here and everybody listening, we went on about an hour tour today, and we weren't able to ask questions, so I got like, three pages of notes on my phone, so just hold tight. I got a few more questions. Lincoln and Sunset, real odd crosswalk. Not even a crosswalk, just, you know, we, there's a lot of people who cross the street right there, in Lincoln and Sunset, and there's no actual sidewalk, so most people kind of wander out into the street and cut to the left or cut to the right, going to the gas station or going into the E subdivision. Is there any way that we could establish some sort of pedestrian right-of-way there, the way they do on campus, to say, hey, you know, let the people cross here, or something like that, without putting a light right there?
At the intersection of Sunset and Lincoln Avenue, we would have to check to see if there are the appropriate ADA ramps, they may not be there. But a pedestrian can cross at an intersection. The volume, this is just my sense of the number of people that'd be crossing in Sunset and Lincoln probably would not warrant anything as far as any traffic signal, always stop, that sort of thing, or signage.
Right, no, I don't.
But as far as people crossing, they certainly can. Whether the appropriate, you know, ramps are there, I can't answer that at this time.
No, what I'm, yeah, I'm sort of just saying, like, when we driving down campus, there's these little highlighted things that says pedestrians have the right-of-way, so the cars have to stop, right? And I see a number of children who are crossing there, so the volume may not be there. But the safety issue is very, very real, right there on that particular corner. There are lots of children who live in that area, and elderly people, a lot of people who use that, who are trying to cross the street right there, because you have to walk all the way down to Bradley Avenue and Lincoln, if you want a crosswalk, or walk all the way down to Fairview and, and Lincoln for a crosswalk. So most people are going to cross right there. So I was just wondering if there's something that we could do.
Possibly, we'd have to look at that.
Okay, one more, and then I'm going to wait after next week, but technology. And Mr. Johnson would be upset if I didn't say Golden Corral. Golden Corral, care center, or, or I-74 old hotel that was torn down. Maybe replace Hickory River, put it right there. Just thought I'd wake you up a little bit over there, Mike. All right, and there's a pond that we own, I'm looking to see if I can fish in that pond. You said we just purchased some land out on North Lincoln, I'd like to be able to go fish out there. I'm just, I'm done, man.
Okay, Dennis, you have a question?
So when I, as we were taking the tour, some information that was announced, and I think, Libby, you were mentioning that there is a potential for making a connectivity path between the Aspen Court Apartments and Philo Road. This has been a long-desired, desire, you know, goal for many of the residents there. They've advocated for that a lot. Can you tell me when, when you think this will become something that we can actually talk about or announce to the Lurman Neighborhood Area community? In other words, this is potential, but not actually an event that we can count on at this point?
Yeah, I think it's something that we would like to do, it's sort of a planning stage, but there are other property owners who are, you know, who would need to cooperate. So I think, I would say it's sort of like at a pre-planning stage, and then as we settle on the housing development, we'll be in a better position to actually make the requests of the other property owners.
Right, and I've been thinking that if we do get to the point of drafting a plan for Aspen Court, that, that would be one of the asks that we might bring forward during that development process.
Yeah, I think we're a little further along than that. I think that, you know, we're looking for a development plan that will work. I think we're, pretty much, we know that that connection's desirable, that's been pretty clear. So can we find a pathway to get through there? And how do you get that done? I think the seed money and the CDBG is pretty important. And just thinking back to the Lenore Adams connection, the first step did take a while, but once everybody was in agreement, it went pretty quickly. First step was to meet with the property owners. Then we had a, kind of like a little preliminary design, and then we were able to use the CDBG dollars to get that built. We think it would be maybe our contribution to the development project in addition to the land at Urbana Town Homes. That might be something that the city could help, help to execute. But we do need the cooperation of the property owners. But this is, as you know, these are how things get done. You start talking about it and planning for it, and hopefully everything will line up. So maybe in the next year, who knows, we may get started on it.
Yeah, that's very, very positive. And then it sounded like the concept for the development of the townhomes has changed a little bit from the original. And are we working with the same developer, or are we, are they, have they brought, is the same developer online? And are we, are they reconsidering their project, or is it a change in development companies?
I think it's, I think it's a change. I think we're looking at some of the other groups that we were able to interview and that we had deemed were also qualified in our interviews, and remain interested. So we're, we're in that process.
So a new concept is about to occur?
Pardon me?
A new concept will be taking place?
Yes, yes, because each of the developers had their own concepts. And I know that we were able to review those in a very preliminary format some months ago. And then we would ask for those to be modified and brought back.
Thanks then.
Yeah.
Anyone else, okay, Diane?
Just a couple, just a couple of quick ones. The discussion about the connectivity between Aspen Court and Philo Road reminded me that when we drove on Kerr Avenue, I think we're going to have the same sort of challenge there with the, the housing developments that's being planned for that. with the, the housing developments that's being planned for that, how to get those people over to Cunningham because it seems to me when we talked about that development a while back, there was no clear way for folks to, to have a direct access to the businesses and restaurants and everything on Cunningham Avenue. And so that's just something to...
I think Cur, Cur's a sidewalk, I mean, Cur will be their connection to Cunningham. To get from the southeast corner to Cunningham, there's definitely other property owners that would prevent that cut through.
Yeah, that's, that's where the cut through's coming in.
But we will have a connection to the, to the west, to Crystal View Town Homes. So they'll be able to use that to get out to Broadway.
Right.
But I think that they'll probably have to walk, now the property abuts Cur, so they'll walk along Cur to get to Cunningham would be the safest way. The ownership, I do not think, unless there was a change of ownership, I don't see that we would have a public path along the south edge for a while.
Okay.
It would be nice, but I, I think that would, that would be difficult.
There may be some unofficial paths though. Okay. And Bill, you mentioned during the bus ride, the update on Lincoln Avenue and Olympian Drive. And I've gotten questions from several people about why can't Olympian Drive be opened because it's pretty much done? And, and so can you just share that with the public?
Sure. Olympian Drive work should be completed this summer. There's still some asphalt shoulders and grading and seeding and signage and striping and things of that sort that still remain and it's very weather dependent. But if we were to open Olympian Drive, the existing Lincoln Avenue is not built to take that extra traffic, particularly heavy traffic. So Mr. Rick Wolken, the Summer Township Road Commissioner, has asked us that we not open Olympian Drive. That would further add to deterioration of existing Lincoln Avenue, but wait until the new Lincoln, excuse me, North Lincoln Avenue was completed. We've have had a little delay in our right of way acquisition and at this time, we're not sure how much work could actually get done this construction season. So it's probable that the bulk of the work, the road work for Lincoln Avenue, that one mile stretch would be not until the 2017 calendar year. The road work would probably be primed to start as soon as weather permits in 2017 and there'd be probably a late summer, early fall completion where we could open the new Lincoln Avenue and then direct all that traffic on the new Lincoln Avenue. So until that happens, as I mentioned, Rick Wolken and Jeff Blue, Dave Clark, City Engineer Champagne, Jeff Blue County Highway Engineer, myself have agreed in concept to keep Olympian Drive closed until the new Lincoln Avenue was open. Originally, the intention was to have both projects dovetail and be completed at the same time, but we've just run into some delays that were unavoidable, so we're not able to start Lincoln Avenue as soon as we'd like. But the planning, really four or five years ago, was to do both at the same time. They were really like companion projects, a little bit different funding source. The design moved along nicely for both, but we just couldn't pull it off. So there'll be a delay.
Okay, I have one more. It was mentioned on the bus trip about the U of I master plan process and that's something else that's come up is how can people have, how can just regular people have input into that process? Because we see so many times decisions made at the U of I have, has a direct impact on the neighborhoods without any impact on the neighborhood.
That has been more the pattern, but this group that's updating this has sought public input. There was one open house, but there will be more. That was the first one and we will announce it when it comes through.
So you'll let us know?
Yeah, there's, open houses on campus, but also ones for the community. And then they've done directed outreach as well. So I think there will be, and I think there is information on the website too that you can, it looks like Bill knows about that.
There's an interactive website too that you can basically, you know, a lot of those planning places where you put dots on places that you want to highlight concerns.
Any idea of what the URL is?
You know, I, I could look it up, but you could probably find it.
U of I master plan, okay.
Facilities and services, where were their landing pages they would have?
Okay, any more questions for Bill or Libby? Thank you very much. Eric was here, I mean, Eric was the last chair of the committee of the whole, I believe. He's gone. Do you want to handle it, Charlie?
Yeah, I can do that. Jeff has some more shirts for us as well. So thanks, Jeff, for those who need larger sizes. For the committee of the whole, we have six, five, five resolutions and ordinances that have come forward. First item is Resolution Number 2016-424-R, a resolution approving the City of Urbana and Champagne, Urbana-Champaign County Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Annual Action Plan. This is from CD. For the committee of the whole, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 2016-425-R, a resolution to approve an amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement Tiger Six Grant Champagne-Urbana Multimodal Corridor Enhancement, Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for AmCorr Project. This is from Public Works for the committee, I so move.
A second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next up, Resolution Number 2016-426-R, a resolution to approve a letter of understanding with Illinois American Water to install water main. This is a letter of understanding regarding relocation of Illinois American Water main in the Green Street during construction of the AmCorr Project. On behalf of, for the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk call, call the roll, please? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next up, Ordinance Number 2016-429, an ordinance amending Schedule K of Section 23-184 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking during certain hours on certain streets. This relates to Division Avenue. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
We.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And the last item is Ordinance Number 2016-430, an ordinance amending Schedule N of Section 23-193 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, limiting parking time on certain streets or public parking lots. This is for the 400 block of West Main Street. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. I forgot to, item E, which is unfinished business, but we don't have any, so we'll go on. Okay, we are at reports of special committees. I don't think we have any, or do we? Our reports of officers, looks like Bill Gray has a report.
Two items. The first, since this is bicycle month and we read a resolution about that, today Public Works crews installed a bike corral on Main Street South Side in front of Lacy's Barbecue. So ride your bike, park, get a barbecue sandwich, oh, I'm sorry. But anyway, that's where it is. And it's a pilot project now, so we're gonna gauge the use, the location, what have you, but Public Works, it's kind of a bright blue corral and you could park your bike on Main Street. It does pay, take up one parking space at that location, so. Tonight, I'd like to, Brad Bennett and I, talk about the Brick Arch Storm Sewer and a little bit of history and background here. Unfortunately, I didn't put this in an actual PowerPoint presentation, but we'll see what we can do here. Okay. First of all, in doing some research, we found out that this area of Urbana was, the subdivision was planted and recorded in 1858, not 1958, but 1858. So the Arch Storm Sewer, and it has this kind of a look to it, it's like an arch, 108-inch internal diameter with 55-inch height, was installed at that time. Oops, wanna go to one other one. This article, which was written in August of 1936, talks about using Works Progress Administration funds to clean this arch sewer. It had been full of debris and it was actually walked by none other than Mayor John Gray, no relation, Max Kench, City Engineer, Robert Gordon, Commissioner of Public Works, and H.R. Stevens, WPA, from Work Superintendent. Anyway, what's interesting is, is that there is need to clear it out, there is roots and debris that had built up in there, but they also poured a concrete base. It was basically earth or dirt bottom to it at that time. But I think there is something to note here. Few people know of the existence of this sewer, which from its outlet in Boneyard Branch between Bucie and Coler Avenue to Oregon Street is six feet high, eight feet wide at the bottom. Actually, the dimensions I just gave you are more accurate since we recently had this internally televised and measured. But folks back then knew about it, but it wasn't necessarily known by all the folks or it ran on their, on those people's property. This article is just, in January of 1936, Nevada, a street drain project is started, again, WPA funded, but just talks about a smaller diameter storm sewer that ties into this brick arch. And it went between Coler Avenue to Lincoln Avenue. So there are many storm sewer feeders into this brick arch. But in the beginning, this was a stream, a feeder stream to the Boneyard Creek. And the arch was built and then the subdivision occurred again back in 1858. And this is just a drawing showing the recording. This is the 808, 810 Green Street area. Again, this was recorded actually in 1898, but it graphically shows approximately where this blue line is, where that sewer is in relationship to the house and the house to the west, the adjacent property. One of the questions that's come up then is, well, how wide do you need to protect a sewer like that? And basically, it comes down to this sort of dimensions. As I showed in an earlier slide, there's two courses of brick, so the internal diameter is, again, about 108 inches. If you add the courses of brick, really you're talking about a 10-foot dimension from the outside of the brick arch to the outside of the brick arch. And typically, you would have a foot outside that archway for a clear zone, if you will. And just picture if there ever was a need to do a point repair or a more significant repair of such a sewer. So if you have this arch, another foot, you'd have a clear zone, then you would have to drive sheeting into the ground. The sheeting has a dimension to it too. Let's just say for a moment, or shoring, that's another foot on each side of the shoring or sheeting. Then you would need room to maneuver past the shoring area, whether it's for equipment, manpower, materials, what have you, you have to have a clear zone, at least three to five feet. So when you add up all those dimensions, you really need a 20-foot wide area to ever be able to maintain repair such a sewer. Now, with the technol, with the advent of trenchless technology, many repairs, if it's not a collapse now, but we need because there's some maybe cracking or things of that sort going on, we can do trenchless technology to try to repair such a sewer, even though it's somewhat of an odd shape. Brad and his research has shown that there are the liner built in a way that they can still do such technology. But still, old pipes and this arguably is over 100 to maybe 140, 50 years old, you know, can and does have problems that can occur that might need a point repair in lieu of any internal repair work. So I wanted to emphasize that because of its diameter, because of a clear distance you would need for any kind of repair, the fact that you need shoring and that you'd have to have space beyond that, not a building right next to the shoring, but space beyond that to physically get around and maneuver to swing pipes, replace, remove, excavate out things, you really need a 20-foot clear zone area. So that was, I know, one of the questions that we had talked at staff about what distance do you need? That's why the dimension of 20 feet has come up. I was asked by the News Gazette and others that, you know, well, do we intend to let other folks know about this sewer or any other location in the city? And it's Brad and my intention, you know, after talking to staff, to try to craft some kind of letter or response to let folks know where they exist and, and give them as best information as we have. It's gonna take some survey work involved to verify admittedly this aerial sketch that you see before you, you know, has a tolerance of, you know, two, three, four feet, give or take, here or there. And when you're talking about a garage or a house, you need to try to be a little bit more accurate than that, so. Hopefully, this has answered some of the questions. We knew it was over 100 years old, but I think realistically, before the lots were planted, the arch sewer was built in prior to, around 1858 or eight, in that timeframe. And that had to be in place before they planted the lots and built the homes.
Diane, you have a group? Well, this thing runs all the way down to Washington Street and there have been many houses, garages, driveways, parking lots built right over this. How is it that we've gotten to 2016 before anyone, before this actually has become an issue? How did this, all this other stuff get built? And why didn't anyone notify anybody about this?
Well, I can't speak for folks 100 years ago and decisions made.
But William, 20 years ago.
But I think what brought this to light was the fact that we're talking about a demolition and a rebuild and the fact that, you know, the sewer was there. These records we've had for 100 years. So the Public Works Department has storm, sanitary, lighting, you know, records very readily available and surveyors and engineers contact Brad and his staff all the time. So I can't speak to why now, why not 20 or 50 or 100 years ago, but I think it's important that we provide this information.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, and that picture that you have up, it looks like, it could be the angle from the air photo, but it looks like several of those buildings are built real close to the lot line on the west side, almost like, and especially the one where the sewer runs underneath, so it looks to me like they might have known it was there when they built that house. How, how far down beneath the surface is the top of the arch?
It outlets into the Boneyard Creek there, so from the top of the sheet pile to the channel is probably about 11, 12 feet. So if you subtract out the 55 inches, I would guess it might have between five to six foot of earth cover over it. The other thing is we've televised this storm sewer, the picture that was in the News Gazette article actually came from the video. So we, we know there's no foundations that are actually built into the, into the storm sewer, so, you know, it's quite possible it might go under somebody's garage, but there are no deep foundations that are actually impacted by the storm sewer. And just as a point too, usually the issue we have with, with storm sewers is we don't want stra... structures over them. It's fine to put, you know, driveways or paved parking areas, obviously, green space is fine, but we want to avoid, you know, structures over them because a lot of times that makes it difficult for us to either, you know, repair, rehab, replace, you know, maintain in the future.
And then, as this goes south upstream, it gets smaller in diameter. At some point, does it, like, when it gets down to two or three feet, maybe past Washington or something, at some point, is it less problematic to have it run underneath your basement? Would you be able to just accept the responsibility for maintenance yourself, or sign a waiver saying, we know if you need to, or I'll replace it when I build my house, if you need to maintain it, you know, I'll give you permission to come in and dig up my basement? Is there anything?
We have done those in the past. In fact, a recent example is Campus Circle. They have a sanitary sewer that runs east-west that actually goes under one of their buildings. Generally, where we've dealt with it before, we require them to put in, you know, a super strength material like ductile iron pipe, you know, rather than the plastic. They had to concrete encase it, and, you know, there was a legal document created that absolved us of any liability if said sewer collapsed or, you know, created issues. So, we have done. The problem is, because of the size of the sewer, those really aren't options. I mean, you couldn't get a piece of ductile iron pipe or encase it in concrete practically to, you know, work around it.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting that this came up. I think that this creek, I haven't checked, but I think this creek actually can be seen as a topographic feature on the Bird's Eye View map that was created in 1858.
It's on the 1869 map that I have.
So, all right, so it's been known. Is, I assume that there was a spring source that created the creek, which this became then the covered version of when they began developing the city back, way back when. And there were other creeks that crossed Main Street and Springfield at that time, too, which are now underground. So, does that creek still exist? Is that still a, do you know whether there is still water coming from a seep or a creek that is actually using this, or is it now just a water runoff from surface sources?
I mean, it's hard to tell when we, you know, televise it. I mean, there is a constant stream of water running in the bottom of it, so it's, you know, quite possible that there is water leaking up through that concrete bottom. It could also be that that's from people, some pumps, you know, running and stuff, too. So, but there is a base flow, there is constantly water moving through that pipe.
So, there probably could be, this still could be the channel of a creek that ought to be cared for, and obviously, the earliest city planners that we know of did something to try to make it possible to get across Green Street or Elm Street without having to go across a bridge or getting your carriage and your horses' hooves muddied up every single time. Okay, thanks.
Charlie?
Yeah, I meant to bring my map tonight, but it's, I would have had to drive because it's in a glass-covered frame. But it shows a couple of bridges. I think on California and Illinois Street, I think, have some bridges where it crosses. It, there are houses around it, you know, the houses that were, that were built at that time, so it was, it was a known feature. But what I really don't understand is, when I look at the map, and somewhere here, I've got a copy of, of what was provided us. Yeah, I've got, I've got the map that they, they showed in the, on the News Gazette website. It looks like it goes directly under some houses, or diagonally under some houses, and yet you say there are no foundations here. So, I'm a little puzzled by, you know, what's really there.
Yeah, a lot of that just has to do with the mapping, and as Bill mentioned earlier, one of the things we want to go out and do is actually some higher-grade survey of the manholes, and then in conjunction with videotaping and possibly some location, you know, narrow down where these are, you know, to a more precise distance. I mean, just because it's drawn on the map that way doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that that's the way that it goes. That's our, the map is essentially our best guess based on the information that we have at what the route is. But, you know, with these large diameter sewers, they don't follow the straight lines like you typically see with our modern sewers, you know. Because they were working with a brick material, they did have the ability to create bends and deflux. So, a lot of times, you can find the manhole, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's a straight line between those two manholes.
Yeah, and given that they were probably just, they were essentially encasing a creek, so it isn't a straight line or anything like that. So, I understand that piece of it. But, you know, if, it sounds like nobody has built a basement into these, into this, so whoever was building knew where it was. They were able to build, you know, close to it and such. So, you know, again, I come back to, you know, do we really need 20 feet? I understand, you know, if you pick the middle of it, you've got to have seven feet, you know, three and a half feet each way, but, you know, we're now asking for, for, you know, six and a half feet on each side of the width of the pipe. So, you know, is it really necessary to do that if we, if somebody's, you know, house burns down, or they need to reinforce a basement wall, for example? And that would be the most likely thing, is if they have to reinforce a basement wall and they're three feet from the pipe, what are we going to expect people to do?
Well, again, the outside dimensions of this storm sewer, which is a double brick wall arch sewer, is 10 feet. Okay, so right there, if you want to use, split that in the center line, it's five feet. To put a sheet piling in to, or some kind of shoring to excavate out, you know, you have to have about a foot clearance from that to the face of the shoring. Shoring's going to be, depending what you use, or sheet piling's going to be, figure another foot thick, okay? So, now you're from five, six, you're seven feet out. You can't have a building, or a wall, or what have you, right there next to it. You know, you're going to have to physically move people, materials, whatnot, back and forth pass, so you have to have a clear zone, if you will, just for the safety of the building and its foundation of at least three feet, arguably five feet. So, if you add those dimensions up, you're going to get to 20 feet. So, that's where, that's where this, if you will, easement, you know, comes from.
So, we've got some apartment buildings along the Boneyard that are built pretty close to the Boneyard. Are those five feet away, 10 feet away from that piling?
I mean, without knowing the exact location, I don't know. I do know that we do have easements on the back of each side of the sheet piling, and I would say it's at least 10 feet typically, isn't it?
I think so.
So, from the back of the sheet piling, we have typically on both sides, about 10 feet or so.
10 feet on each side of that.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm really concerned about this, and maybe, and when we get to discussion, I have some thoughts, so.
Really, this is just for information. This came up at this recent case, and we looked into it, and we learned a few things ourselves as far as the age of the pipe, and incidentally, it's in good condition.
Would this qualify as a legacy storm sewer?
This could very easily be a legacy storm sewer.
We might consider that. Thank you very much.
They don't build them like they used to.
No, they don't. Okay, thank you very much. You want to say something?
I have a report.
Oh, you have a report, okay. We have a report from Bill Brown.
I just found that Master Plan website. I wanted to say, it's masterplan-Illinois.com, and you can do some interactive mapping and stuff.
Diane?
I have an announcement, two follow-ups, and a thank you. So, the announcement is that this Thursday evening at 7:00 at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church on Philo Road is the annual Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association meeting, or the SUNA meeting. It's, it's a great, a great time to come to get a chance to ask questions of all sorts of city officials and meet neighbors. So, that's Thursday, 7:00, May 5th, St. Matthew's Lutheran Church. Two follow-ups. A couple of weeks ago, we had representatives from ITV3 here, and I pointed out that the public access channels were not available. Two days later, Channel 6, which is UP-TV, became available on ITV3, so that is now. If you get TV service through ITV3, you can go to Channel 6, and UP-TV will be there. And I understand that 5, 7, and 9 are being worked on. That is part of the agreement they had with the UC to be bored when they got the contract, so it's good that they're working on fulfilling the terms of the agreement. Also, a couple of weeks ago, a resident from Savannah Green came and complained about the litter and trash in the development, and as a result of the, her comments, Savannah Green was added to the Boneyard Cleanup Day, and I was part of that. That was one, that was the area that I went to, and we did clean up a significant amount of the trash on the east side of the property. Not all of it, but we got a big chunk of it picked up, probably 10 or 12 or more garbage bags full. So, some progress has been made over there. And then the last is, I would like to say thank you, and I'm going to put on all my I would like to say thank you to the organizers and to the volunteers who made the Illinois Marathon such a success on such a crummy day on Saturday. It's a $10 million economic benefit to the community, and I think it's the best event of the entire year. So, I just thought I'd wear my bling to the meeting. And there are a whole lot of very much, people who are much faster on this council, but they didn't get as many medals as I did. So, I thought I was very strategic.
Okay, Charlie?
Look, congratulations. It was, it was a fun but cold event. There is something to be said. You know, people were, I had out-of-town visitors that I hosted for, for running, and they're amazed even that with this weather, how many people were out there cheering and volunteering and, and helping them along, you know. So, so that's kudos to our community that we can put on this event with so many great volunteers and so many people cheering them on. I, I know there were a couple of folks that I passed by that were just, just unbelievably cheerful, and they're standing there in the cold, at least I'm running and moving, and, you know, Bill, Bill, I think you had a PR there, you know, giving us the first, your first half marathon, and, and so, congratulations. And Mike, we all know, runs like, you know, a maniac all the time. So, anyway, it was, it was a lot of fun, and it is a great community, so I totally agree. The other thing I was going to say is-
You should mention Audrey, too, as long as you mention her.
Well, constituent number one had a great race, yes. She won her age group. And she was fourth overall in, in her event, so, yeah, it was pretty fun for her. I was going to say, UI7 and CGTV have become live as of today. Yes, and I was, that, that just came through in the email. And so, but one thing is, people who, who get this, if it doesn't show up at, you know, at 5, 6, or 7 on your dial, or when you, when you tune in the ITV channel, I don't know what they call that, master box, but when you tune that in, if it doesn't show up, you may have to pull the power cord or turn the power off for 30 seconds and restart the box, and let it go through its reload, and it will reprogram itself and include those channels. So, so we have two more peg channels as part of it, and I think that, that leaves them, Parkland left to go, right? Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And there, and Parkland is waiting for equipment and reconfiguring, so that, that really will be more up to Parkland's schedule than ITV3.
Any other reports of officers? Libby?
Just to let everyone know, the market at the square starts again this Saturday, so across the street, it'll be a great season.
Thank you. New business, number one, ordinance number 2016-05-031, an ordinance approving a major variance, allowing an increase in the maximum allowable height for a freestanding monument sign from eight feet to 13 feet at 1106 West University Avenue in the B3 General Business District. And this is what, okay, go ahead, and then we have one person from the public who wants to testify. So, go ahead and do your report first.
The person from the public who wants to testify is the applicant, so.
Okay.
Or at least I refer to Robert DiAtli. It's a request by Robert DiAtli of Barbara &amp; DiAtli Incorporated for a major variance to allow an increase in the maximum allowable height for a freestanding monument sign from eight feet to 13 feet at 1106 West University Avenue in the B3 General Business District. I'll quickly go to an overview of the site, and I can explain from there. This is on University Avenue near the intersection of University and Goodwin. It's the vacant, the old Mexican restaurant that was there between the Campus Circle Development and the cycle rebuilding to the left. The applicant represents a potential developer who would, who's proposing to demolish the restaurant and put in a new, new restaurant and new building at the site. It would, the applicant doesn't wish to state the, the name of the particular restaurant at this time until, until the development is final, but it's a quick-service, fast-food type establishment. So, they would propose to put in a new building with dine-in service as well as carry-out service. The site itself is zoned as B3. It has a vacant restaurant building. To the west, you have the cycle building and some mixed commercial space as well. To the east, you have a restaurant. Further to the east and behind the building on the, you know, to the east and to the, to the north are the, is the Campus Circle Development. All these properties are zoned B3 general business. They are all for the future land use designation, the comprehensive plan, they're all designated as community business. There's a vacant parking lot across the street owned by the university that's zoned as institutional. So, the current uses, I just explained, you'll see in the picture, the Campus Circle Development is occupied by basically the entire lot up to the railroad track, and then just to the east of the restaurant right there as well. It's rather large. Existing zoning as well. There's some R5 just beyond, on the other side of the street, a little past the, the B3 lots, but most of it's B3 to the east and west, and industrial to the railroad The applicant is currently in, there, there's also an existing sign there that is non-compliant, but it was in place before our current sign ordinance, the zoning ordinance was put in place. The applicant is, currently, the zoning ordinance states that freestanding monument signs, such as the one that the applicant is proposing, if they are within eight to 15 feet of the public right of way, they must be no larger than eight feet tall. The applicant is requesting a variance, a major variance, because it deviates by more than 25%, for the sign, for the allowable sign height to be a maximum of 13 feet tall as opposed to eight feet tall for various circumstances given the nature of the lot. The property line generally starts about the end of the sidewalk on the, on the property, but it's worth pointing out that, first of all, the Campus Circle Development, which command, receipt, was part of a planned unit development that received variances that allowed it to have a minimal setback from the public right of way than what is allowed. That was to encourage the density of the project as well as allow for closer exposure to the street and just to fit the maximum number of spaces on the parcel. The Durst Cycle Building as well also has a significantly closer setback to the public right of way as well. Because of those circumstances, of the minimal setbacks of the neighboring buildings, as well as, it's a relatively shallow lot that, that- well as, it's a relatively shallow lot that, that the restaurant would be able to develop on, and because of the requirements in the zoning ordinance of what we require for a quick-service restaurant, let me scroll down to the site plan one moment. Because of the, the square footage of the floor area for the proposed restaurant, it would be, we would require twenty-eight parking spaces, and for that capability, they are able to meet without any variances or requests. However, our zoning ordinance does require that all fast, all, all restaurants or cafes or any, anything offering drive-through service have stacking space from the order window to prevent cars from backing out onto the right-of-way when they are ordering, as we've witnessed with other developments in the city. So, we require stacking, stacking space for up to six cars, which the applicant is able to provide for in the development, but there also is required a, of a drive aisle that is of a necessary width to accommodate the parking configuration for twenty-eight spaces as well. The circumstances of accommodating for a drive-through aisle as well as a drive aisle for traffic going through the site, and the relatively narrow nature requires the, requires the developer to take up the entire depth of the lot going back to the lot line, and it also requires them to push the restaurant further up towards University Avenue. Because of this, to have a two-sided freestanding monument sign, it would be, it would be difficult to locate the, the sign further back, because if you locate it back, further back than the restaurant, not only are you blocking visibility from potentially one direction, you might also be blocking it from the other direction because the campus circle development is up so close towards the street. The applicant states in, in their application, let me just briefly go up to the site plan The monument sign would be thirteen feet in height and then seven feet in width, it'd be compliant in the area of this, of the sign. The applicant has agreed to make sure that it's a, it has a solid base at the bottom, so it's a monument sign, not just a, a traditional pole sign, which, which are some of the other signage along University Avenue. And there would also be an electronic digital board towards the center in the, in the bottom, but the applicant is requesting that the sign be thirteen feet to allow for better visibility because of it being located along a rather busy arterial, and because of the conditions of the lot requiring it, the building to be located up further, so therefore, the applicant is requesting that the sign be allowed to locate further, but also be taller to provide visibility and identification, et cetera. So, to go to the variance criteria in the zoning ordinance, are there, are there special circumstances or special difficulties with reference to the parcel concerned in carrying out the strict application of the ordinance, the shallow depth of the property, the minimal setback of neighboring buildings as well? The second criteria, the proposed variance will not serve as a special privilege because the variance requested is necessary due to special circumstances relating to the land or structure involved or to be used for occupancy thereof, which is not generally, generally applicable to other lands or structures in the same district. The scale of the nearby buildings, trees, the, create just a level of obstruction of signage that would be placed farther back, and, and for signs that are located, even signs that are located, you know, within eight to fifteen feet, it's constrained by the shallowness of the lot, lot's configuration, and the, the requirements in the, in the ordinance for parking and everything are not necessarily applicable to other sites. The site is infill development, it's smaller than others along the corridor, so it wouldn't necessarily be receiving a special privilege than other, other developments. Third criteria, the, the variance requested was not the result of a situation or condition having been knowingly or deliberately created by the petitioner. The shallow lot depth and the placement of the neighboring buildings were not really, were not really put there in place by the petitioner or by the proposed developer. The variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. There, there's other intensive commercial development that has been allowed to be of a slightly larger scale than the, than the district prescribes for that, for that corridor, so it would not necessarily be disrupting anything, any character of the existing neighborhood. Uh, the variance will not cause a nuisance to the adjacent property. The sign would not increase the scale of the property's frontage along University Avenue. It wouldn't be taller than the building. It would also be in close proximity to the general building, if you look on the site plan, scroll down here. The sign would be located right where the hand is, kind of slightly toward, towards the first drive aisle, so it wouldn't be too far from, far from the building or standing out too far from what would already be the, the restaurant. And then the sixth criteria, the variance represents generally the minimum deviation from requirements of the zoning ordinance necessary to accommodate the request. Given the, the existence of the conditions that require a building more pressed towards the, towards the property line near the street, the high-speed traffic arterial, the importance of proper identification, as well as, as well as just the, the neighboring buildings, the, the sign would be compliant in all, all, all other regards to the, to the ordinance except for the building height, so in that sense, it does represent a minimum deviation. So, with those findings, staff recommendation, or the, I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals voted with six ayes and one nay to recommend approval of a variance allowing an increase from eight feet to thirteen feet in the maximum allowable height on the freestanding monument sign based on the following condition: The sign is developed as a monument-style freestanding sign in general compliance with the attached site plan and rendering. Just to, to clarify, by monument style, that means it would not be placed on a pole, that it would have a base that, that is the same width of the entire sign. The applicant has stated a desire to possibly speak, but before that, do you have any questions for me?
Charlie?
Yeah, thanks, Chris. I, I take it that because this is a monument sign, it can't be closer to the road because then it would affect the visibility triangle or visibility of, of cars getting in and out and onto University Avenue?
Well, it is within the, it's not asking for a variance for the setback, but-
No, I, I realize that, I'm just asking theoretically, is that why, why, why we have, you know, it can't be, it can't be closer to the road than eight feet, is that correct for the sidewalk, or?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and that's, I assume for visibility issues, more than anything else, right? You know, so, because I, I was gonna say, I'm trying to figure out how the extra height gets, gets the sign seen through the trees, and maybe the, maybe that's something the, the owner can address, 'cause I, I'm having trouble picturing how the height gets you what you want when, when maybe getting it closer to the road and lower under the trees might be more visible. That's where I'm going with this, so maybe he can answer that question.
Okay, did you wanna say something? Okay, so, Mr. DiAtly, you have questions for you.
I, I wanna welcome this redevelopment, by the way, so, thank you for taking it on. It's probably a, I, I assume this is gonna be a twenty-four-hour restaurant with breakfast, lunch, and dinner, you know, and, and maybe twenty-four hour, given the, the number of students that are directly located behind it. Yeah, I know that the national franchise encourages twenty-four-hour stores, I don't know what the hours will be at this store yet. So, my name is Robert DiAtly, I'm here on behalf of Barber and DiAtly General Contractors. We are an Urbana business, and we're working with a local franchisee who is the owner of at least one facility of, of this establishment in the city already. He wishes to expand and has identified Urbana as the location of, of this expansion. Excuse me, I'm unusually nervous. As a part of the site selection, we reviewed approximately ten locations throughout Champaign-Urbana before settling on this site. As a part of the site selection process, we were considering parking setbacks, whether or not we could comply with the codes and ordinances, and the sign issue is what, what came down to is something that did not work at this location. And ultimately, I guess, to answer your question about the height of the sign, at, at the proposed variance, we're still below the tree canopy, so it's still able to be viewed at a distance, whereas had it been side-by-side, the building itself, as well as the adjacent properties, the Durst building, the campus circle facility, and, and the tree trunks, particularly when viewed from a distance, limit the visibility of, of the sign, hence the request. More than anything else, I wanted to encourage you to find in favor of this variance. I, I think really, the presentation from city staff has hit most of the items, but certainly if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try and answer anything.
Any other questions? Dennis?
Will the sign itself, it looks like the circular part at the top, will be that, will that be illuminated from within during the evening hours?
It, it would be within the light levels allowed under the ordinances.
Charlie?
Yeah, you know, given they meet everything else, and, and, you know, it seems like a small adjustment, if, if that's what works under the trees and gets them the visibility they need, given the, the other buildings being out that far, you know, they're not asking for the building to be out the same distance, so I'm, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to move, that we, that we, I, I move this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any comments?
So, what is the business again that you're trying to open?
You know, they, they are not wishing to disclose the business until after the agreements have been finalized.
You said they were in another city, what was that city again?
No, they're, they're in existing Urbana business with, with at least one location in Urbana.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood what you said.
They're, they're in, I believe, twenty cities in central Illinois, as well as the national, national presence.
Wait a minute, how, how, I'm a little confused. At some point, we'll know what the business is before we allow you to start building there, right?
No.
No?
Not necessarily.
Oh, 'cause I care about the businesses in my ward, what you mean, why do I care?
If the, if the project moves forward, I'm confident that there will be an announcement of what it is before ground is broken.
It'll probably say on the sign.
I think, yeah.
It's not a golden corral, probably.
That's one problem that I'm having with this so far, but, uh, you know, certainly if it was a gambling establishment or something like that, I'd have to know about it before, the council would have to know, right?
Right.
No, that's just to get the license. You don't have to know in advance, we can turn the license down if we don't want it. Anything else?
I guess if you're not gonna tell me what it is, I can't make you, right?
Okay, Dennis has a question.
And, of course, this could fail because they do have to get the Urbana-sized sink. And we don't know if that's possible in every instance.
Okay.
But it is a restaurant?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, ordinance number 2016 dash zero five dash zero three two, an ordinance approving a major variance, this is the one to allow a reduction in the required side yard setback from seven feet to five feet at 708 West Green Street in the MOR. Okay, no, somebody wanted to talk about it, I believe it was Charlie, so you're not gonna act on it, but you just wanna discuss it, is that correct? You had questions, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, and, you know, we're, you know, a couple of things here, I, I have a bit of a prepared statement, I, I'm gonna read part of it, I think, but, you know, having the map with what the possibilities are is, is a start, 'cause I think that, that need to be part of the application process, to at least have a concept of what's going on. I'm still a little confused because the, the totalable, the actual lot area is listed as, it's listed as two lots, but yet then the actual lot area is given as thirteen thousand one hundred and sixty-three point eight-two square feet, that's the two lots combined. And, uh, the way the MOR works is that it's a point seven FAR, and there's a maximum of lots, buildable lot size of eighty-five hundred square feet, and everything above that has to be green space or parking or something like that, so, you know, there's, there's no, there's no question that this is gonna be, you know, it, this is not gonna be combined into a single lot, so that the calculations, to me, have to be done on the individual lots themselves. So, for example, the lot on the left has sixty-four hundred and thirty-nine point five square feet, and at a point seven FAR, you could build forty-five hundred and seven square feet, that could be one story total. It could be two stories, in which it should be about twenty, you know, twenty-two hundred, twenty, twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet per floor, and if it were three stories, it would be one, um, you know, about twelve hundred square feet, oh, well, three, fifteen hundred square feet per floor roughly. So, and, you know, fifteen hundred square foot footprint, um, if it's three stories, would be, I think, you know, something that I would wanna see drawn on here, and the same thing, the same calculations need to be done for the, the property where the, where the sanitary sewer crosses. You know, then we could say, okay, it's, you know, there's X number of square feet that are allowed, a three-story would have a minimum footprint, and I think this is what, what we were discussing earlier. And, and so that's, you know, to me, that's, that's what I think we need to see, is that if it's three stories and, you know, there's an allowed, that first story is X number of feet, then how does it fit on this lot, given the need to be ten feet away from the sewer and so on? And so that's what I'm, that's sort of what I'm looking for, uh, so that we know that we're making it an intelligent, oh, it's on the flip side there, oh, it's on the flip side, oh, okay, well, maybe I should let Lori talk about it. So, has, has staff checked these numbers, and does this, does this actually work?
I think, as Andrew alluded to earlier, they are requesting a continuance to take a look at everything again, do some redesign potentially, and come back if necessary.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, so, you know, I'm just, I'm gonna go ahead and, and read most of what I, what I said here, and, and people can take it for what it's worth. I mean, I think we're, we're getting to where I think we needed to be at the beginning of this process. Uh, you know, before it went even into the ZBA, this probably should have been in hand, and it's not part of what we got in our packet.
Can I ask a question before you read?
Yeah, oh, yeah, please.
Is, is the possibility of combining the two lots completely off the table now as, as these new alternatives are being explored?
That would be a question for the owner's representative, I, I believe. It would require a significant change to the size of the project to meet zoning.
Okay.
Do you want to say something, Andrew? Sure, you wanna answer the question? Come on up.
Several people have asked, so, yeah, I would, including myself.
Charlie, I can fill you in on some other kind of information, too, that is a little more detailed, I guess, but, yeah, we looked, when we, when the, when the issue of the storm sewer first came up, we approached city staff to try to resolve this problem in the best way possible, and one of our, uh, presented options was to combine the lots, but part of the, the issue was that, is that when we can build separately on the lots, we, if we combine them- we, if we combine them, the maximum amount of square footage we can build is about 5780, I think, I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, it's .7 times 8,500.
So that's the biggest building we can build if we combine the lots together. If we, if we keep the lots separately, we can build 9,000 and some square feet. So our proposal was, let's mitigate this problem, let us combine the lots and build our 9,000 square feet. And that was basically a non-starter with city staff.
That would mean major variances on...
Well, we didn't get that far, so...
All right, okay.
Any other questions for Andrew? Go ahead, Dennis.
Yeah, it's not so much for Andrew, but maybe it is. So I guess what Charlie's asking is that if, if the proposed footprints are what you're showing in the sketches, then we need to have that accurately reflect the individual lot, square footage, so that we can get the ratios correct. And right now, it looks like the square footage is lumped, so that would have, that's a question.
But this side is right.
One side is right.
Yeah, but the flip side is where the, yeah.
All right, all right, so then let's wait and see, I guess, is what my thought is. And thanks for actually trying to build a building that is actually allowable by right and has no, no variances. I think that's an illuminated beginning to, to try to create a, a building in a district.
I would like to, Charlie, at least, address some of your issues to kind of, at least convey what the problems really are. And they're all very complex. When you start a problem like this, we have floor area ratio, open space, and parking. So we have a, a three-variable equation we have to solve. So, and, and the particular lot with the sewer, our initial intent was, well, on the whole development, to build two sister buildings, probably identical buildings, mirror images of each other. And to do that, we would have the, we would use the existing driveway configuration between the lots. So what happens when we have the storm sewer, we have a gigantic setback on one side, so our only real option is to put the driveway over the storm sewer. So that cut our open space dramatically, because half of the driveway was, only half of the driveway was gonna be on this lot. Now, the entire driveway is on this lot. We also have to park behind the building, which eats up half of our foot, buildable footprint, north and south, because we have to get parking back there. So what might be the buildable footprint on a blank lot is very different than the buildable footprint when we have to introduce all the different aspects that need to go on it. And I, I also would like to point out that while it is not necessarily germane to your decision, what the owner thought he could build here by rights without the storm sewer was six two-bedroom apartments. And what we can build by rights with the storm sewer is three three-bedroom apartments. So he's gonna take a hit of about $4,200 a month on the, on the rent. So in 10 years, he's willing to lose a half a million dollars to do this by rights. So that may not be a necessary part of your equation to solve, to, to help figure out this problem, but it's a real concern to anybody that wants to develop in town. And when you have a developer that's willing to take that kind of hit to be nice to the neighborhood, I think he deserves a little bit of credit.
Yeah, my point is that I think, I don't know if this was part of the packet to ZBA.
It was presented at the meeting, because it was the revised version, since the original request was a different front yard setback.
Yeah, so, I mean, this, this helps understand the problem. And, you know, parking is, is, because of the, the neighborhood it is, parking's pretty necessary. You're not, you know, in the middle of a downtown here, so people are gonna have cars. And so, so it's good to see this. I can understand why you want to get some variances, I, you know, you want to maximize what, you want to maximize your investment, I understand that. But at the same time, this is, this is where the, you know, the neighborhood gets a little upset that, that people are overbuilding in, in, in the neighborhood. And we have the MOR protections to, to try to, the MOR requirements are there to protect the neighborhood. You know, we're, we're asking, we're trading off the rights of the existing neighborhoods against the rights of a, a person to develop. And, and, you know, so the, the, there's a limitation there. And so, you know, you can build something that is still probably profitable, it's just not as profitable. And I think that's, and I think that's acceptable. I mean, you can still make a, a profit, it's just not theoretically what you could maximize. And, you know, that's, that's business. So, I mean, from that, if, if that's the situation, then yes, we can applaud a developer who's willing to, to make a, you know, an investment and get a reasonable return as opposed to a maximum return. And, and that's a business decision. I hope he can, I hope he can make enough of a profit on it to, to make a go of it.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks, I guess, right? Okay, we're up to an appointment. I'd like to appoint Todd Rent to the Police Pension Fund Board.
So moved?
A second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.